I don't know if you like interrupt the video and have that screen. Let me see, let me see.
Okay, no problem. Thirty seconds. We're gonna go online in thirty seconds. Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the 2017 Florida Department of Transportation Five-Year Work Program Public Hearing Facebook Live Stream. Roberto Romano, Community Outreach Specialist for District 6. This is an opportunity for you to learn about proposed projects That will be funded and carried out in District 6 during the next five years. You can view tonight's meeting materials by visiting fdotmiamidade.com/workprogram. Apologies, we're having some technical issues. Stay tuned for the work program presentation portion of this public hearing at 6:45 PM. You can provide comments on our comment box below, Which will be shared with attendees if time permits. This is an opportunity for you to formally present your comments, opinions, and ideas About the project for the record. Now, you can send us your comments via email At wpcomments@fdotmiamidade.com. When providing a comment, please provide your full name. You may mail in your comment to the District 6 Communications Office At 1,000 Northwest 111th Avenue, Room 6134, Miami, Florida 33172, Or call us at 305-470-5349. Now, remember to like us on Facebook at MyFDOTMiami, Or follow us on Twitter, that's @MyFDOT_Miami. Visit fdotmiamidade.com to learn more about our upcoming and ongoing projects here at District 6. Now, you may use hashtag #D6WP throughout the night on social media. Now, at this time, we will address our Spanish and Creole-speaking participants. Spanish and Haitian Creole translators are available upon request. On our call, on a colleague here, Gerty, who'll be speaking to those Haitian Creole-speaking viewers. Gerty?
Bonsoir. Bienvenue dans le département de transportation Florida 2017. Cinq années réunion publique pour programme travail transport. Nommois c'est Géry Saint-Louis et puis ma part a dit pour nous à Sway. Nous comptons vous dire nous sous Facebook Live aujourd'hui. Réunion ça c'est opportunité. Que yo parle finisse et puis batin la D66 là nos cinq année yo cabini. Sous tare mais ouais ossoali information yaval bay mounio aswaya s'il vous plaît. Visitez www.fdotmiamidade.com. À six et quinze inquisition pour programme travail transport a commencé. S'il vous plaît nous mande nous pour être là sous Facebook Live pour nous capoze question. Nos boîtes question nous gère en bas. Sous nous gère temps nous parle partager question sous participant qui là aswaya. Ça c'est opportunité pour nous formalement poser question By opinion ac l'idée ou sous projet a nos dossier. Souvrez ou car elle est souvrez ou capable voyez email nous Na wpcomments@fdotmiamidade.com Songe pour le voir voyez comme songe le voir voyez question pour voyez nous ensemble. Souvrez ou car voyez la bio communication adresse ça c'est 10000 Northwest 111th Avenue. Chame là c'est 6134 Miami, Florida 33172 Ou car elle nous na 305 470 53 49. Songe pour aimé nous sous Facebook na MyFDOTMiami Ossoal ouka suivre nous sous Twitter @MyFDOT_Miami Ouka visiter nous na www.fdotmiamidade.com Souvrez plus information sous projet yo. Non moment ça na parle par les mounio qui parle épanol Sous brésin on montra dit pour s'il vous plaît mande en abao un tradictaire. Merci pour jo, passons bonnet.
Thank you, Gerty, and now we will speak to our Spanish-speaking viewers here At our 2017 Work Program Public Hearing at District 6. Now, buenas tardes, bienvenidos a nuestro programa de trabajo De cinco De dos mil diecisiete aquí en el estado de Florida. A través de este medio de comunicación soy Rodolfo Román, El especialista de alcance comunitario en el distrito seis. Esta es una oportunidad de aprender de nuestros proyectos Tentativos que serán financiados y llevados por el distrito seis En los próximos cinco años. Usted puede leer más información visitando a nuestra página web Este en sintonía para una presentación comenzando a las 6:45 PM. Usted puede escribir sus comentarios a través de las redes sociales. Los comentarios serán leídos si el tiempo permite. Esta es una oportunidad para presentar sus comentarios, opiniones, e ideas De nuestros proyectos para nuestro archivo. Usted puede proporcionar su comentario o mandar preguntas a través del correo electrónico Al wpcomments, escribe wpcomments@fdotmiamidade.com. Puede mandar sus comentarios a través de correo postal a la oficina De comunicación en la dirección 1000 Northwest 111th Avenida, 4º 6134, Miami, Florida 33174. O lo puede llamar al 305 470 5349. También los puede seguir a través de las redes sociales, a través de Facebook donde lo están viendo MyFDOTMiami, o por Twitter @MyFDOTMiami. Puede visitar nuestra página web también para más información de otros proyectos que están en construcción O que vienen en el futuro, fdotmiamidade.com. Esta noche puede usar hashtag #D6WP Para usar aquí la información en las redes sociales. Now, le damos a dar un poco de vistazo ahora aquí en el distrito. Vamos a hablar ahora al público que habla inglés. Porque en la switch gears to English, and we're gonna give you a quick look here At the district auditorium, I'm gonna move out just for a few seconds. Throughout the evening, we will be interviewing several Florida transportation project engineers And staff who will be informing us of upcoming and ongoing roadway improvement projects. As you can see, the district auditorium has been transformed into a venue of information Featuring projects in both Monroe and Miami-Dade County. Project staff is here to answer questions to the public about the district's projects. Some of the projects featured here tonight include The projects on the Seven Mile Bridge, Monroe County Resurfacing and Landscape Projects, The Truck Bypass Projects along Chrome Avenue In Miami Beach, the projects along Alton Road, And the Golden Glades Interchange Projects Are also being featured, and just a few. We will be speaking to some of the project managers who are in charge of those projects. Other governmental organizations are also on board here with us tonight, Including the Miami-Dade Transportation Planning Organization, Miami-Dade Expressway Authority, and Florida's Turnpike Enterprise. Make sure to use again hashtag #D6WP throughout the night. Now, we still have time, we're on till 8:00 PM. You can make your way here to the district auditorium. We're located at 1,000 Northwest 111th Avenue. The public hearing will go all the way till 8:00 PM. Again, please provide your comments, which will be read if time is permitted here on Facebook. Now, in just a few seconds, we're gonna welcome in our District 6 Secretary, Mr. James Wolfe, To join us here and talk a little bit about our projects. We're gonna welcome in now our District Secretary, Mr. James Wolfe. Thank you very much for your time, Secretary. Now, I'd like to first and ask you first and foremost, How does this evening tie into the department's mission to provide a safe transportation system That moves people and goods, enhances economic activity, And preserves the environment and are here in our community?
FDOT has a work program over the next five years of about $4 billion To deal with transportation issues in Miami-Dade and Monroe County. And we work with our partners, particularly the Transportation Planning Organization, In addressing all of our needs, starting with safety number one. Then there's maintenance and operation of our system. Get those out of the way. What investments do we need to make in additional capacity? And where should those investments be? Tonight here, we have a great crowd, we have exhibits. We're talking about our major projects such as the Golden Glades Interchange rebuild, Okichobe Road, the Palmetto Expressway, And of course, our support for the county's smart plan, Enhancements to our public transportation. And complete streets is another topic that gets a lot of attention here, and it's in our program. We're working on better facilities for pedestrians and bicycles.
Secretary Wolfe, I know you're a busy man tonight, so thank you so very much in taking your time and speaking to us tonight. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, and in just a few seconds, now we're gonna have Mr. Chris Rosenberg. He is the work program administrator. He's gonna let us know what is the work program all about. He'll give us a 401. Chris, Sir Chris Rosenberg, thanks so much for joining us another year. So, just to let our viewers know, what is exactly the work program?
So, the work program is a living, breathing document. I'm lucky enough to have the responsibility of organizing our financial plan as a department. So, the work program exists over the next five years, which are fiscal years 2019 through 2023. Basically, it takes into consideration not just our own state roads, But every single mode of transportation. So, what we have to do is we have to organize a plan that abides by not only state law, But federal law, we have to meet all of our Florida statutory requirements. And at the end of the day, we take in all of the feedback from not only our local partners And elected officials, but more importantly, from the people who are living alongside our upcoming projects. So, events like this where we have public hearings, We get to take in really meaningful feedback from members of the community, And we get to adjust our work program so that it's the best fit for our community.
So, Chris, how does FDOT prioritize the projects here during in the work program? How does that work? Can you take us into the process?
Sure. So, obviously, we have our own FDOT projects where we take the lead, But we also assist our local partners through grant programs. So, there's a lot of different ways that we prioritize projects. One of the main ways that we receive data is through our local transportation planning organization, Which is in Miami-Dade County. Being an urbanized community of over 200,000, They have a board of elected officials, And their staff puts together a prioritized list of projects That is a comprehensive plan of things that they've received from the community. That's one of the main documents that we use to prioritize projects in our work program. Apart from that, our main business decision factor is safety. So, every project that we look at has a safety component into it. Obviously, we also want to preserve our infrastructure. So, once those things have been accomplished, we can then look at capacity. So, basically, we have a tiered approach to developing our work program, But more importantly, it's receiving the data from all of our partners And all of the people who are affected by our projects.
Chris, I want to thank you so much for giving us the rundown about the work program. Appreciate it. Thank you so very much for your time. Now, we're gonna take you now a quick little look here, Guide you through our district auditorium And take you to the tables that are being presented here tonight As we wake our way through. In just a few seconds, we'll speak to some of the project managers that are have a table. Now, quickly here, as you can see to the right here, We have the Golden Glades Interchange Table. Project Manager Ms. Fabiana Gonzalez-Batista Is explaining, as you can see, information to one of our residents That from the public that came and visit us here in south, in our District 6 Auditorium. Some of the priorities at District 6, I'd like to read something or a little bit about FDOT District 6. It covers Miami-Dade and Monroe Counties, which is home to more than 2.6 million residents Who travel more than 31 million vehicles miles per hour. That's right, they travel more than 31 million vehicle miles per hour, per day, sorry. And now, the state road system includes 700 miles of roadway, Which when all lanes are considered equals 2,0967 lane miles. Our residents are served by seven public airports, Seventy-eight private airports, two rail lines, Two deep water ports, and three rail systems, Which include the Tri-Rail, Metro-Rail, and Metro-Mover. Again, we're showing here a quick look at some of the project tables That we have in store at the district auditorium. You can still make your way through to the district auditorium. We're located at 1,000 Northwest 111th Avenue. The public hearing will be all the way, run all the way to 8:00 PM. Our presentation will start at 6:45 PM. And you can provide your comments on our comment box, Or you can send us your comment by email at wpcomments@fdotmiamidade. Now, in just a few seconds, we're gonna welcome in Ms. Fabiana Gonzalez. But right now, we're gonna speak to the project manager on the Okichobe Road projects, Which are taking place, will soon be taking place, they're soon in design. Ms. Baoying joins us right now to speak to us about these projects. Where, now Baoying, there's a couple of projects here along Okichobe Road. You are the project manager for design for these projects. Can you just give, basically, give us a little quick synopsis about these projects?
Sure. Yeah, there are about five Okichobe Road projects From Chrome Avenue all the way to Northwest 79th Avenue. Now, the reconstru-, it's a reconstruction job with concrete pavement between Turnpike and 79th Avenue. We're looking into some intersection improvements. Let's say additional left turn lanes, right turn lane, adding acceleration lane, Deceleration lane, as well as gray separation, flyover, And those are the major improvements at the major intersections Such as 116 Way, which is the Miami, which is the Harley Court and Drive, As well as the 87th Avenue.
Baoying, I want to thank you so much. I know we have a packed house here. You're a busy lady. Thank you so much for giving us the information about these upcoming Okichobe Road. Thank you very much for your time. Thank you, Baoying. Okay, and now, we're gonna speak to Ms. Fabiana Gonzalez-Batista. She is a project manager. Fabiana, thank you so much for your time. We're gonna talk a little bit about the Golden Glades Interchange projects. Can you basically let us know what is going on here with the Golden Glades Interchange? Break us down for our viewers.
So, the Florida Department of Transportation, District 6, and Turnpike Have joined efforts in basically upgrading the entire Golden Glades Interchange. As I'm sure everyone's aware, The interchange itself is, has a lot of delays, It has a lot of operational issues, And the goal is to have this massive project Which will improve the operations of the whole entire Golden Glades Interchange. It'll have improvements to I-95, to the Palmetto Expressway, 826, Also to the Turnpike Connector, and as well as State Road 7.
Fabiana, I want to thank you. You're a busy lady. I saw you speaking to some of the residents. I'll let you go into the table. Thank you so much for your time And explain to us a little about the Golden Glades Interchange. Thank you so much, Fabiana. Thank you, thank you. Okay, so we have now more information, as you can see. We have a lot of tables provided. In just a few seconds, we're gonna take, we're gonna move south. We're gonna go to some of the projects that are in design and are in construction along Chrome Avenue. And once again, we'd like to remind you, You can send us your comments through Facebook on our comment box, And it will be read if time permits. You can send us your email, sorry, your comment, through email At wpcomments@fdotmiamidade, Or you can send us your comment by mail To the Communications Office at 1,000 Northwest 111th Avenue, Miami, Florida 33172. Okay, we're gonna move in just here for a second. We're gonna take you out to the other tables. As we can see, we're going to show you a little bit About the projects taking place along Chrome Avenue, And also on State Road 826. It's a project development and environmental study. We're gonna speak to project engineer, project manager, Ms. Maria Perdomo, To explain to us a little bit about these Chrome projects As we move forward here to this area. As we're moving our way through. And once again, you can use the hashtag #D6WP. Maria, thank you so very much for your time and taking to, time to speak to us About these Chrome Avenue projects that are taking place. Now, we're gonna speak to you first about the Chrome Avenue in design project, And then, we're gonna go ahead and move to the State Road 826 project development and environment study. But let's first start off with the Chrome Avenue project. Some of them right now are ongoing, some of them are completed. But tell us a little bit about the design projects and the Chrome Avenue projects, And what are the benefits that we are seeing?
Well, as you see in behind me, Chrome Avenue is a very long corridor. It's approximately 36 miles long. And the department's purpose for these projects is safety. That is the primary purpose of these projects. Right now, Chrome as a whole is a two-lane facility, going one lane each direction. In the future, we'll have four lanes, two going each direction separated by a median. The project begins in Okichobe and ends always south to southwest to 96th Street. In addition to having the two lanes each direction, the median, We're also enhancing the corridor by adding guard rail in the median And also lighting along the whole corridor. In addition to that, we also have pedestrian bicycling safety being considered, Especially to the southern ends of the project. So, we're having a shared youth path That's gonna start on southwest 8th Street and begin all the way south to 296th Street. So, mainly, the purpose behind all these projects is safety, And hopefully, with some of these improvements, we'll lower the fatality rate, Hopefully to zero for the Chrome Avenues. And then, as you see here in
A little bit here on the map.
In blue, this is a truck bypass. The purpose of that project is to take the truck traffic away from the historic homestead area And bypass them or change their routes towards using US1, which is another state highway.
For the information on the Chrome Avenue project. Now, we're moving on to the State Road 826 Palmetto Expressway PDNE study. And this is the South Project Development and Environment Study. Now, we understand that this road right here in particular is used by a lot of communities, as we know. So, what is this team studying in an effort to improve the traffic flow on this corridor? And is there an estimated timeframe for this study?
Yes. So, we're looking at express lanes as a link, okay? Express lanes are gonna be used not only on I-95, But they're also be gonna be connected to I-75 and also along the Palmetto. Right now, we have a construction project that is incorporating those express lanes north of this. The construction project, this project, which is the PDNE, It's only in the first phase, it's gonna connect to that construction project eventually. But right now, we're in the beginning phases, So, we're actually looking at different alternates to incorporate express lanes. We're gonna be studying where the ingress and the egress of these express lanes begin and end. And we're just in the beginning of it. We're estimating for the PDNE to last about two years. So, hopefully, in July of 2019, we have a preferred alternative Where we can now incorporate and reconnect all of Palmetto with express lanes.
Maria, thank you so much for explaining to us a little bit about the State Road 826 Palmetto Expressway. And then, of course, the projects along Chrome Avenue. Thank you so much. I'll let you get to work here. A lot of residents we have. Okay, Maria, now we're gonna move in. We're gonna meet Mr. Hector Fong. Hector, how are you? Thank you so much for your time. We were just speaking to Maria about the projects along Chrome Avenue. She was telling me a little bit about the design ones now. Some of them are already on construction as we speak. So, Hector, what have we seen? What improvements and what are the benefits have we seen That these projects have already been completed?
Well, primarily, these projects were due to safety. Maybe Maria already covered that. But these projects were fast-tracked and mainly done for safety And as well as capacity and drainage improvements. Now, we have the north section complete From north of 8th Street all the way to Okichobe. That is fully complete now and open to traffic, four-lane configurations. Currently, we're under construction from 8th Street all the way down to 136. And with, I'm sure Maria just covered this, With the remaining sections under design, And then, that will be completed later by 2021. Hopefully, everything, all of Chrome Avenue will be fully complete, so.
Well, that definitely sounds like a great plan, save some lives, Which is one of our priorities here at FDOT. Hector, I want to thank you so much. And we can find information by visiting our website, fdotmiamidade.com. You can interview some of the materials that are featured here at the work program. That's fdotmiamidade.com/workprogram. Hector, busy man. Thank you so much for your time. I'll let you do your stuff. Thank you, Hector. Okay, we're gonna move forward in just a few seconds. We're gonna speak to Mr. Renato Marrero. He is of the Maintenance Department. And can you explain to us just a little bit about how the Maintenance Department here at District 6, What they are all about? Now, after the presentation, I'd like to remind you That we will continue to interview other members of the FDOT District 6 staff, Including engineers working in Monroe County. We're gonna speak to some of the folks of the freight, crane, mobility, and more. Stay tuned after the presentation for interviews and more. And again, use that hashtag #D6WP on social media To make sure that we can go ahead and interact with you. And once again, provide your comments on our comment box, And it will be read if time permits here tonight at our public hearing. These are just some of the tables that we have featured here tonight, Which include several of, just such as the traffic operations and safety campaigns. We have just a few. We'll speak to Mr. Carlos Hermierto. He'll talk to us about the traffic operations portion And the safety campaigns that are being held here at District 6. We'll speak to him in the second half, so right after the presentation, Which starts promptly at 6:45 PM. We have some more information, including here of the I-95 projects. And one neat thing about coming out to the work program And other public meetings and hearing is that We're able to hear input from the public. And that's what we're here for. We're here to hear from the community And hear your opinions and ideas. And that's what we would like for you today to do as well, to provide that on our social media. And again, if it, if time permits, we'll read it here tonight. And as you can see on the tables, there's a lot of brochures, information about these projects. As our cameraman is zooming in, those are all brochures, maps, That really help you understand the projects that are taking place ongoing Or that are coming down at the pipeline here at District 6. And all these materials, well, some of the materials here featured in FDOT 2017 work program Are available for download at our website, fdotmiamidade.com/workprogram. Just a friendly reminder, you can send your comments through email At wpcomments@fdotmiamidade.com And provide it on our comment box here on Facebook. And if time permits, we will read your comment here today. Our public hearing will start roughly at 6:45 PM, so stay tuned in just a few. I'd like to read you some more information, a little bit about what FDOT is all about When it comes to what we do and our priorities. The department's top priorities are safety and the preservation of the state highway system Or existing FDOT roads. The department's top priorities are safety and the preservation of the state highway system or existing FDOT roads. The department also prioritizes capacity improvements and other projects such as landscaping, intelligent transportation systems, and service patrols. Now, the department coordinates directly with federal and local governments, including Miami Dade County Transportation Planning Organization, Miami Dade and Monroe County Commissioners, and local municipalities. Transit airports, seaports, rail, bicycle, and pedestrian travel programs also receive state and federal transportation funds. Now, the FDOT vision is to serve the people of Florida by delivering a transportation system that is fatality and congested free. Now, did you know, on any given day in the United States, 660,000 is the estimated number of drivers using electronic devices while driving during daylight hours? Make sure you put your phone down. It can wait, don't text and drive. Later on in the second half of our Work Program here today, we will be speaking to Carlos Hormiento, who is in charge of the District Safety Program. And he'll give us some tips, some information about, well, don't text and drive, how important it is. We gotta save some lives on our roadways. Once again, for project information, any of the information that you have for any particular project, you can visit our website, fdotmiamidade.com, where you can search through a list of upcoming and ongoing roadway projects. You may also contact our District 6 Communications Office by phone at 305-470-5349. Just a reminder, to use #D6WP. That's the hashtag you could use. That's #D6WP throughout the night here through social media. Now, we're gonna speak to a gentleman here who works with the Maintenance Department at District 6, Mr. Renato Marrero, joining me now. Renato, thank you so much for your time. I know you're a busy man here today. But we're gonna talk a little bit about the Maintenance Department here at District 6. Now, South Florida was recently affected by hurricane Irma, it was just last month. And now, can you provide a quick synopsis of FDOT's role before, during, and after this storm?
Sure. I'm gonna brag a little, and then I'm gonna go into the question. The reason I'm gonna brag is, as we all know, the hurricane hit us on Sunday. Monday morning, the winds have subsided, the hurricane had moved north. Monday morning, we deployed about 25 inspectors to inspect all the bridges. By Monday afternoon, evening, we had already confirmed that all the bridges were traversable. By the end of Tuesday, we have rebuilt portions of the roads to ensure that the first responders were able to get to the places they needed to go. And by the end of Wednesday, we have restored other sections of the roads, so the residents and others could use them as well. The reason why I mention that is because we prepare heavily before the storm. What we do is, we have numerous contracts, both for consultants, for inspections and oversight, and also a couple dozen construction or repair contracts. And then those are deployed immediately, right before the storm. Everyone's in place, and the moment it's safe to go outside, we start making the phone calls, we start getting the contractors out there, and everything is repaired as quickly as possible. Another thing that we do before we get to places is move the sand, move the debris. And we have good contractors that are able to do that. But I mean, this hurricane actually allowed us to confirm that our plan actually works. Because it's always, for many years, thank God, and knock on wood, for many years, it was a threat. Okay, we have all this stuff in place, let's hope it works. And this year, we actually confirmed that it does work.
Thank you very much for that, you know how important it is. Now, what are some programs in place that ensure state roads are well-maintained?
Okay, our maintenance budget is about $25 million a year. That's about 55 contracts. Out of the 55 contracts, 20 of them are renewed every year, the other one are brand-new contracts. So we have numerous contracts to fix anything that is broken. So we have those contracts in place, the work is done. So how do we know if the work is being done properly? We have this program called the MRP Program, Maintenance Rating Program, that essentially is a credit card, I'm sorry, it's a report card for the work that maintenance does. We go and we review all the assets, whatever we own from right away to right away, and we give it a grade based on certain standards. For many, many years now, we've exceeded the minimum state score. So we do a great job at maintaining our roads. As a matter of fact, every year nationwide, the roads are graded. And it's always first place between Florida and Texas. It's a swap. So this year, I don't know who's gonna come in first, Texas or us. But historically, we've done a great job at repairing our roads and ensuring that they're well-maintained.
Renato, thank you so much, and thank you for retaining your roles. I appreciate your time. I know you're a busy person out here today. We gotta pack out, Renato. Thank you so much for your time. Thank you, thank you. I'm gonna step just away for a few seconds, just to show you again here the district auditorium, where folks are, and you can still make your way. Again, we're here till 8:00 PM. The public hearing will start at 6:45 PM. You can interact with us on Facebook by providing your comments here on Facebook, or you can send it by email, wpcomments@fdotmiamidade.com. You can mail your comment to the District 6 Communications Office at 1,0011, room 6134, Miami, Florida, 33172, or give us a call at 305-470-5349. Now, you can also use our hashtag here tonight, #D6WP. That's hashtag #D6WP. And we can go ahead and use that here on our social media. Now, we're gonna speak a little bit about Frank. You know, there's a lot of going into the future here in our district. I'm gonna call in now Mr. Carlos Castro. He is the district coordinator. Carlos, thank you so very much. We've been obviously doing a lot of outreach out there for several of the projects with the freight. And now, there's a particular one, which is the Golden Glaze Truck Travel Center, which is in the preliminary stages. Can you describe what the Truck Travel Center is all about?
All right, so a Truck Travel Center is really a full, it's a commercial motor vehicle facility, full-service. And this is a facility, but I think I can use an analogy, turnpike class. So you have areas where the general public can actually park, have some amenities. Well, this is the equivalent for the trucking community, for a freight logistics system. This is a location where you would have actual trucks parking. It would have amenities like a fueling operation, convenience store, leaky load containment, and several other amenities that are actually necessary for the trucking community. So this is really a complementary asset to the freight logistics systems. And I'm gonna use also the analogy of transit. On transit, we rely on parking ride facilities, try to park and ride transit. Well, this is the equivalent for the freight logistics community, truck parking.
So when you talk about Truck Travel Centers, we're looking at the one in particular, the Golden Glaze. What is it trying for? What are we looking at here?
So right now, we're in the preliminary stages, as you mentioned. And we're looking at really delivering the project through a public-private partnership, or what is commonly known as that P3, right? And we're more than likely looking at starting construction sometime in 2022, 2023. Lot of work that needs to be done ahead of time. They put out an RFP, or Request for Proposal, where we rely on the private sector to come in and help us deliver the project. So that's kind of the timeline for the project itself.
And Carlos, are you looking, or the department looking at some other potential areas in the future?
Yes, we are. So the Golden Glaze area is one side, as you pointed out. It's a smaller location, about 10 to 12 acres. But District 6 is actually looking at multiple areas throughout the county. We're looking at areas in the city of Opa-locka, city of Miami Gardens, in the south, in Miami. Essentially, we're looking at areas that are freight generators. We also want close proximity to the highway system. And that's essentially the effort at hand. So to answer the question, yes, we're looking at multiple areas throughout Miami Dade County. We got a documented history of need for truck parking facilities in the county. The closest one, full service, is in 595 in the Turnpike. That's in Broward County, but Miami Dade County is lacking truck parking facilities. And the department is actually trying to deliver a tangible solution on that front for a freight logistics system.
Carlos, thank you so much for giving us that insight, information, and education about Truck Travel Center and how important they are for our District 6, and both county, in Monroe and Miami Dade. Thank you so much, Carlos. Now, in just a few seconds, we're gonna bring in Mr. Andres. He's the project manager for the projects along the Seven Mile Bridge, Mr. Andres Beatty-Cartier. We're gonna bring Mr. Andres. Andres, we're gonna welcome you in now. And once again, Andres, thank you so much for your time speaking to us. You are the man behind the Seven Mile Bridge project. So Andres, take us down. What is going on exactly on the Seven Mile Bridge? There's two projects in particular. Can you just let us know?
Sure, yes. There is two projects. You're correct. The first project is on the new Seven Mile, the newer one. That project started in about April this year. It's about a two-year project. It's really to get the service, to extend the service life of that bridge. So we're doing a lot of concrete work underneath substructure. And we're also redoing the concrete deck on the bridge. We're also providing new striping. And we're also gonna be updating and fixing, replacing essentially, the fender system underneath during the navigational channel. And that project's about $15 million, and again, it's gonna last about two years. And then the other project is the old Seven Mile project, which is more historic of the two bridges. And on that project, basically, we're starting now. Through the hurricane, we actually had to push back the start date a little bit. And the actual first official day was September 30th of last month. So we're just getting underway on that job. And that job is really gonna be to restore that bridge up to Pigeon Key from Knights Key. And that's about a $33 million job, and it's about a four-year project. So we're gonna be on there for a while, doing a lot of rehab work, fixing the railings, the deck again, a lot of the substructure work as well on that project. During the duration of that project, the pedestrian access is gonna be closed off on that bridge. So, you know, the duration of that project, you're not gonna be able to use it. But once it's done, it's gonna be all nice and beautiful people to be able to access it.
Andres, I want to thank you so much for giving you that, giving us that information about the Seven Mile Bridge. We know how important they are. They're very famous. We've seen them on TV and everything. So Andres, thank you so much for your, I appreciate it. Thank you. I'm gonna step away just a few seconds here to show you. As our public hearing will start in approximately seven minutes. And again, you can still make it to the district auditorium. We're located at 1,000 Northwest 111th Avenue here in Miami, Florida. Make sure to use that hashtag #D6WP. That's the number 6WP, hashtag #D6WP. And once again, make sure you provide your comments on our comment box right there below on Facebook. And if you would like to, you can also send us an email at wpcomments@fdotmiamidade.com. Make sure you provide your full name. And also, you can mail your comment to the District 6 Communications Office, 1,000 Northwest 111th Avenue, room 6134, Miami, Florida, 33172, or give us a call, 305-470-5349. Now, as we take a look here at the room, several tables featuring several projects. We have spoken to many of the project managers, several engineers here tonight, addressing the information about these projects. In case you missed it, no worries, this will be here on our Facebook page. And you can find more details on our website, fdotmiamidade.com. Some of the materials are available for download at fdotmiamidade.com/workprogram. We're gonna take just a little look here again at some of the members of the community, elected officials, engineers, that are joining us here tonight at the auditorium, informing the public about upcoming and ongoing projects here in Miami Dade as we prepare for our presentation. Once again, provide your comments on Facebook. You can provide it there on our Facebook comment box right below. We will read it here tonight at the public hearing, if time permits, as we are about to get started in just a few minutes with our Work Program Public Hearing 2017. Again, the materials are available for download at fdotmiamidade.com/workprogram. We'll show you a presentation which will also be available for download, and you can see it right at the comfort of your own home. I'd like to give you again some of the priorities of FDOT as we get ready for our public hearing presentation and comment portion, where we will hear from the public. And if you are unable to make it here tonight at the District 6 Auditorium, no worries, you can write your comment on our comment box here on Facebook, or you can send us a comment using the hashtag #D6WP. Or send us an email, wpcomments@fdotmiamidade.com, or send it through postal mail at District 6 Communications Office at 1,000 Northwest 111th Avenue, room 6134, Miami, Florida, 33172. Or if you'd like, you can give us a call, 305-470-5349. As in about four minutes, we will get started with our 2017 Work Program Public Hearing Presentation. Again, you still have time. You still have time to provide your comment here on our Facebook page, our comment page. And we will be able to address it here publicly, if time permits, right after our presentation. One of the top priorities here of the department is safety and the preservation of the state highway system or existing FDOT roads. The department also prioritizes capacity improvements and other projects such as landscaping, intelligent transportation systems, and service patrols. The department coordinates directly with federal and local governments, including the Miami Dade County Transportation Planning Organization, Miami Dade and Monroe County Commissioners, and local municipalities. Again, in about two minutes, we will get started with our formal public hearing presentation. You have two minutes to provide your comments there. Or throughout the presentation, make sure you write your comment on the comment box. If not, you can send us an email, wpcomments@fdotmiamidade.com. Send it through mail. District 6 Communications Office at 1,000 Northwest 111th Avenue, room 6134, Miami, Florida, 33172, or give us a call, 305-470-5349. Once again, we are about to begin the public hearing. Please provide your comment, idea, or opinion on the comment box here on Facebook, and we will read it tonight, if time permits, as our public hearing will get started in less than two minutes. Once again, send us your comments here on Facebook. Comment, opinion, ideas about ongoing or future projects as we will get started with our 2017 FDOT District 6 Work Program Public Hearing. As we get started here with the public hearing. And now, we will get started right now with our Work Program Public Hearing. We will be right back with more interviews coming to you from our district auditorium right after the presentation. Make sure you provide your comment on our comment box, and we will read it if time permits.
We have an amazing turnout in the midst of all this weather, so we thank you for taking the time to be here. Thank you, everyone who's watching online, who's tuned into Facebook Live. We have a handful of viewers, and we're just happy to hear from you today. I would like to introduce Secretary Wolf to open up our public hearing portion of the Work Program five-year hearing.
Well, this is a great turnout. I've been to a number of these over the years. I've never seen so many people here in person, and that handful was 30 people. Well, you know, 300 is better, but it's growing every year. And I think the electronic portion of the meeting is gonna become more significant over time. But welcome to those 30. Why are so many people here in the room and so many on Facebook? It's because transportation is vital to those that are, some of you are in the industry. But to everybody in our communities, it's absolutely important for economic vitality. It's a quality of life. We've got industry and development that happens here because we have good transportation and will not happen if we don't. We have $4 billion approximately over five years for FDOT's Work Program to solve our transportation issues in Miami Dade and Monroe Counties. And we have a challenge. We need to apply that in the right places. Our top priority is safety. Our next priority is maintenance and operations. We're gonna repair those bridges. We're gonna fix, we don't actually have any potholes. If you don't want on a state road, you win a prize. But we're gonna resurface our roads. roads on schedule and keep our existing assets in good condition. And then after that, we still have funds to do projects like fix the Golden Glade interchange again, this time forever? I don't know. We have eight projects actually we're developing for the Golden Glades and they're probably not the last eight that'll go there, but we're improving it. We've got Okeechobee Road, we've got express lanes on the Palmetto. We have stations all around the room that are talking about key issues important to transportation. And I know those that are in the room were able to walk around and mingle. A couple of interesting points in transportation that factor into the development of our Work Program. We work very closely with the county and in particular with the Transportation Planning Organization. They give us priorities for projects and then particularly when we develop the new fifth year and fund new projects, we're looking at the TPO's priority list. Some of the things that go into what's important to us is complete streets. It's a design concept that says it's not all about cars. We get most of our commuting done by cars, but in fact, we've got pedestrians, we've got bicycles, we've got transit. It all needs to mesh together in a properly designed system that considers all the modes. So we're very active in doing complete streets design, particularly with our partners with the county and with the cities. Another issue is transit. The department partners with transit operators, most particularly the county here in Miami Dade, and they have the SMART Plan. The TPO and the county have developed a plan to upgrade six possible rail routes and six possible express bus routes. So we have active planning studies going in concert with the county and the TPO staff to pursue improving mass transit in this region, which is absolutely vital for us. So a lot of exciting things going on and we're going to have a parade of speakers that are going to come up here after we show a video. The video is next, right? We're going to see a video. Thank you for coming out.
All right. Thank you very much, Jim. My name is Chris Rosenberg, I'm the Work Program Administrator, so this document in front of you is a comprehensive document, like Jim said, of a compilation of everybody's work and I'm just here to present it to you and take your feedback. Basically, for those of you who are joining us at home, the important thing is that you also review this document along with everybody here in the audience. There's two documents, for those of you in the room, the orange document is our Miami Dade County public document, and then the blue one is our Monroe County public document. So for those of you at home, if you go to fdotmiamidade.gov, dot com, pardon me, and hit the Work Program link, you can also follow along. Well, I want to thank you all for joining us this evening. This is a very important part of our process in developing the Work Program. We like to listen to our public to make sure that we're doing the right things in our community. Before I go forward, I'd like to recognize an elected official that has joined us here today, Marcos A. Villanueva, Commissioner from the City of Sweetwater. If you'd please stand up and be recognized. Thank you. A little bit different this year, we normally have two public hearings, as you probably noticed. Unfortunately, as a result of Hurricane Irma, we extend our continued support to our friends down in Monroe County as they recover from Hurricane Irma. This year, as a result of the hurricane, we have one public hearing, but we're going to be doing it to cover both counties equally. So we do have project tables here in the room that do cover both counties equally. So you did hear from Jim Wolfe, our secretary, but also with me here today is Harold Desdunes, our Director of Transportation Development. And new to District Six, but longtime FDOT employee, Antonette Adams. She is our new program management administrator. So, most of you already had the chance to walk around over the last 45 minutes, it's kind of like an open house setting where you got to talk to a lot of the engineers. If you didn't get a chance to do so, if you're arriving a little bit later, don't worry, we're going to stay here until 8:00 PM and we're going to address all of your questions. So please do feel free to continue to interact with us. What we're going to do now is like Jim said, we're going to show a quick video. This video is going to summarize how we incorporate projects into the Work Program and how our program gets prioritized. After the video, I'm going to open the floor to Q and A from the audience. I please ask to have consideration for everyone, so if you do have comments and questions, please keep them to two minutes. When you do come up, give your name, address, and then we will recognize you to follow through with your question. So without further ado, I'm going to begin our video. The Florida Department of Transportation's mission is to provide a safe transportation system that ensures the mobility of people and goods, enhances economic prosperity, and preserves the quality of our environment and communities. The department's top priorities are safety and the preservation of the state highway system or existing FDOT roads. The department also prioritizes capacity improvements and other projects such as landscaping, intelligent transportation systems, and service patrols. We coordinate directly with federal and local governments, including transportation planning organizations, county commissions, and municipalities. Transit, airports, seaports, rail, bicycle, and pedestrian travel programs also receive state and federal transportation funds. District Six covers Miami Dade and Monroe Counties, which is home to more than 2.6 million residents who travel more than 31 million vehicle miles per day. The state road system includes 700 miles of roadway, which when all lanes are considered equals 2,967 lane miles. Our residents are served by seven public airports, 78 private airports, two rail lines, two deep water ports, and three fixed guideway systems, Tri-Rail, Metro-Rail, and Metro-Mover. Now, let's review where FDOT District Six gets the funds to do its work. There are several funding sources. The adopted budget for District Six's five-year Work Program is $3.988 billion. 56% of that funding comes from the state. 34% of that funding comes from federal aid. The remaining balance is from toll revenue, right-of-way, and state infrastructure bank bonds, local contributions from other entities to perform work on FDOT-related projects such as MDX, utilities, and other government agencies, and other funds. FDOT District Six's Work Program allocated funding in the following categories: product, product support, operations and maintenance, and administration. Now let's discuss product. FDOT District Six's Work Program is allocating $2.8 billion in product. 73% of District Six's product consists of construction improvements. 17% of the product is dedicated to freight logistics and passenger operations exceeding statutory requirements. The remaining product is right-of-way and other products. When broken down further, 23% of District Six's construction budget is allocated toward public-private partnerships. 57% is allocated toward capacity improvements. The remaining budget is allocated toward roadway resurfacing, bridge repair, and safety improvements. Of the $478 million of freight logistics and passenger operations funding, FDOT is investing $171 million in transit improvements. The remaining budget is distributed amongst other modes of public transportation, including aviation, rail, seaports, and intermodal. The Work Program is a tentative list of projects that will be funded and carried out in District Six during the next five years. It is the department's budget for work in Miami Dade and Monroe Counties and is developed annually. Each year, the current projects are completed and a new fifth year is added. Projects are identified and schedules are developed based on priorities and allocated funds. As a result of the 2016 legislation, the 2017 Work Program cycle was accelerated two months from the normal schedule. In May, the department begins the Work Program cycle internally. Between June and September, there is significant interaction with county officials, including elected officials and Miami Dade Transportation Planning Organization, or TPO, staff to determine any projects they and their constituents would like to bring into the Work Program. The public hearings take place in Miami Dade and Monroe Counties in October. Then, the Miami Dade TPO and Monroe Commission have an opportunity to review the Work Program at their October meetings and give their concurrence. In November, FDOT staff in Tallahassee compiles our district's plan along with that of all other districts to create the statewide Work Program. That is sent to the Governor's Office, Legislature, Florida Transportation Commission, and Department of Economic Opportunity in December. In January, the Florida Transportation Commission holds a public hearing to receive public input for the tentative Work Program. After the appropriations are approved by the Legislature, the Work Program is adopted by the FDOT State Secretary in July, and the cycle begins again. The TPO coordinates the plans of all the transportation agencies operating within Miami Dade County into its Transportation Improvement Program, or TIP, which also has a five-year timeline. It then prioritizes all projects for submittal to the Department for federal, state, and local funding. The TIP incorporates transportation plans from all of the following: FDOT District Six, Florida's Turnpike Enterprise, Miami Dade Public Works, Miami Dade Transit, Miami Dade Aviation Department, Miami Dade Seaport Department, Miami Dade Expressway Authority, South Florida Regional Transportation Authority, and the Citizens Independent Transportation Trust. The department coordinates with the following county partners to facilitate the decision-making process for Monroe County. Throughout the cycle, the department receives input from Monroe County staff and county commissioners for projects to be added into the Work Program. Now let's watch a video that further explains how projects are developed.
The state of Florida has recently surpassed New York as the third most populous state in the U.S. with nearly 20 million residents. Even more staggering, Florida has 100 million visitors coming to the beautiful sunshine state every year, and 50 million of these visitors arrive by car. Our infrastructure and planning are integral to the state's success, economic growth, and vitality. Transportation impacts where we live, work, and play. Helping meet the transportation needs of residents and visitors to this great state through stable and long-term planning is the primary responsibility of the Florida Department of Transportation. The Florida Department of Transportation plans, develops, and implements multimodal projects or infrastructure to meet the long-term transportation needs of Florida's residents and visitors through a stable Work Program. The FDOT consists of seven districts and the Florida Turnpike Enterprise. District One, with a land area of nearly 12,000 square miles, represents 12 counties in southwestern Florida. Its 1.8 million residents contribute to the 21 million miles traveled daily on its state highways. District Two is home to more than 1.9 million residents. Its 18 counties cover nearly 12,000 square miles. Travelers on the state highway system log more than 43 million miles daily. District Three represents Florida's Panhandle. Its 1.4 million residents are spread over 16 counties and 11,500 square miles. Each day motorists travel more than 26 million miles on state roads. Five counties make up District Four's 5,000 square miles. With 3.6 million residents, vehicles in District Four travel more than 52 million miles daily. District Five is one of the fastest-growing areas of the state. It covers nine counties, has nearly 9,000 square miles, and is home to nearly 4 million residents who log more than 55 million vehicle miles traveled daily. District Six encompasses Miami Dade and Monroe Counties in South Florida. The district is home to 2.6 million people. Its roads are traveled more than 31 million miles daily. District Seven, with a land area of nearly 3,400 square miles, represents five counties with almost 2.9 million residents in the Tampa Bay area. Drivers in the district travel nearly 34 million miles daily. With 483 miles of beautifully maintained safe toll highways, Florida's turnpike system spans from Miami to Wildwood and includes toll facilities in South Florida, Orlando, and Tampa, as well as Polk County. On average, 2.3 million motorists use Florida's Turnpike each day. Florida's Turnpike Enterprise is responsible for toll operations on all FDOT-owned and operated toll roads and bridges. This represents more than 600 miles of roadway and approximately 80% of all toll facilities in Florida. The existing transportation system within Florida is served by state-owned roadways, bridges, airports, deep-water seaports, rail lines, and transit agencies. FDOT maintains nearly 13,000 center lane miles and 6,783 bridges. Florida is home to 110,000 center lane miles of off-system roads and 5,381 off-system bridges, as well as 15 seaports, 129 public-use airports, two spaceports with 10 launch facilities, and numerous passenger and rail freight partners, including the Sunrail, which runs from Orlando to DeBarry, and the Tri-Rail, which runs from Miami to just north of West Palm Beach. FDOT's yearly transportation budget is more than $10 billion, and FDOT is only 25% federally funded. State and local transportation officials are also responsible for looking at areas of congestion and the cause of these reoccurring and non-reoccurring trouble areas, and must develop plans and strategies to solve these congestion problems. Plans and goals at each district are carried out in part by each district's five-year Work Program, the district's transportation plan. This program is developed by working with local governments, other agencies, and the public. The metropolitan planning organizations and local governments help to set transportation priorities for the department. The district funds the highest priority projects using state and federal funds and entering them into the Work Program, keeping in mind there are funding constraints and it may take time to fully fund these projects. This Work Program contains projects in different phases of production: planning, project development and environment, design, right-of-way, and construction. Whether a new road or bridge is being built, or the department is assisting other transportation agencies, each project goes through the phases of production. The official five-year Work Program is adopted July 1st by the Florida State Secretary of Transportation. July 1st is the first day of the state's fiscal year. The plan is adopted after the public hearings are held and public comments have been accepted. Local governments have endorsed the plan and the Florida Transportation Commission and state legislators have approved it. The plan also has stability. First, it is financially balanced. FDOT uses state and federal dollars that are forecasted in each fiscal year to fund projects that metropolitan planning organizations and county commissions have prioritized. Second, the plan is also stable because it funds the different phases of production to ensure the projects are moved through the schedule all the way through construction. Some projects are in the middle of the production process, some are just beginning, and some are near the end. As the district develops and updates each year's Work Program with residents and local governments, it is understood that next July 1st, the current or first year of the plan will have begun or is complete and will not show as proposed anymore. The new fifth year will be added on. The yearly update produces the tentative new five-year Work Program. The district works with the public and local governments to set priorities with this new five-year plan. New priorities are populated into the new fifth year. Adjustments in the first three years create stability issues. The Work Program assures we have a prioritized program of transportation choices that result in a better quality of life for the residents and visitors to this beautiful state.
District Six currently has several major projects underway and planned over the next five years in Miami Dade County. They include Palmetto Expressway, I-75 Express Managed Lanes Network, Golden Glades Interchange, I-95 Improvements, Okeechobee Road, Chrome Avenue Reconstruction and Whitening Project...
I-95 Improvements, Okeechobee Road, Chrome Avenue Reconstruction and Whitening Projects, First Street Bridge, Alton Road and Collins Avenue Projects, and Smart Plan. District Six currently has several major projects underway and planned over the next five years in Monroe County. They include Old Seven Mile Bridge Repair, Landscaping and Resurfacing Projects, a new pedestrian bridge for Founder's Park in Isla Marada, Overseas Highway from Sugarloaf Key to Cujo Key and from Cujo Key to Summerlin Key, State Road 5, US 1 Overseas Highway from Ohio Bahia Honda Channel to Seven Mile Bridge, State Road 5 Overseas Highway at Sugarloaf Key, Overseas Heritage Trail. These major projects are generating thousands of jobs in District Six. According to the Federal Highway Administration, for every $1 billion invested in transportation infrastructure, 28,000 jobs are generated. $3.988 billion invested in the FDOT District Six work program will generate more than 142,000 new jobs in Miami-Dade and Monroe Counties. If you have questions or comments, please call (305) 470-5349, or send an email to wpcomments@dotstate dot fl dot us. Thank you for joining us.
Okay, so Harold, myself, and Antonette are going to be sitting at the front of the room. The floor is now open for anyone who would like to provide comments or questions regarding our five-year work program. We'd be happy to take them from you. We also have our court reporter sitting here, so if you're not comfortable getting up in front of a crowd and asking questions, please feel free after this presentation to go up and dictate directly to our court reporter. We will answer any and all questions that do come.
In this case, we even have guidance on sea level rise in our design manuals, and we take that in consideration. So, the short answer is yes, it will be evaluated, and if there's a necessity to elevate the road, we will do so, including I-95. For every project that we have in the city of Miami Beach, we are coordinating all the drainage improvements to ensure that we account for the flooding. So the short answer is yes, and what we're trying to do is team up with the city to see where we could put the pump stations to handle the flooding that's occurring currently. your question, and I'll be happy to send you the answer. You're welcome.
Well, like Jim stated in his opening comments, the department is engaged in looking at all roadways in a comprehensive manner and looking at context sensitivity when we're doing our new projects. Bikes are an integral part of all of our roadways, and we do consider them in all of our projects. With that being said, we do not have a dedicated fund source for our bicycles and our bicycle lanes. However, we do prioritize our needs for our bicyclists, so they're built into all of our scopes and all of our assessments of future projects.
All right, and it's far, wow, the mic is now on. But as far as facilities, you say bike lanes, but you know the incidence of car crashes and bicyclists in bicycle lanes is our main concern here in Miami-Dade County. We have one of the worst reputations in the country for bike on, I should say, car-on-bike crashes. So is there any consideration being put into the five-year plan, the design, to make sure that the bike lanes are not just bike lanes but protected bike lanes? And that means impenetrable by any kind of motor vehicle, because that is the issue here in Miami-Dade County.
I do have some engineers in the room here, so if anybody would like to field that one for us, or Harold if you'd like to take that one.
I think it's for every project that we look at and we evaluate for bike lanes, in some cases you have different solutions for the specific facility. One thing we did evaluate, and we have in our standards, is we provide a buffer. If you remember the old days, before, it was just a single stripe, six inches or four inches. But now the evaluation is to provide a buffer to ensure some distance from the moving vehicle and the bicyclists that are using the facility. In terms of a barrier, sometimes it may seem that a barrier is the right thing to do, but you also, what it does, it also creates a hazard because you're putting a barrier next to a moving vehicle who may be moving at 45, 50 miles per hour. So case by case, if it makes sense and if it's possible, we do evaluate safety cases for bicyclists and the motoring public.
Well, I understand your concern for a 4,000-pound motor vehicle encountering a potential barrier, but what about the vulnerable road user, a cyclist that has no protection, no exoskeleton?
No, we understand that clearly, and again, that's evaluated case by case. I can't envision right now a project specifically where we've put a concrete barrier, but I do recall several projects that we worked on where we're putting buffered bicycle lanes on our facility.
All right, well, I just want to make a statement that the Everglades Bicycle Club is not for bike lanes. We are for only protected bike lanes at this time because of the high incidence of distracted drivers specifically. I can't tell you how dangerous it is to ride in a bike lane even with a buffer, even with a buffer zone. That does not ensure that a car is not going to encroach on that bike lane and kill a bicyclist. It's happened on the Rickenbacker Causeway a number of times, and we all know about that. So I ask that in your design, we don't want to go another five years without this kind of protection, and it doesn't have to be a concrete wall, per the FHA standards, which just came out in 2014 or 15. You now have a design guide for, in fact, protected bike lanes versus buffered bike lanes. So what we are asking for from the cycling community is that in every design, that that not only be considered but implemented in order to ensure the safety of a person like me that doesn't have the protection of an exoskeleton.
And we hear your concern, and just as a matter of fact, the department is so proactive in terms of the needs of bicyclists, we even have a bicyclist bike-ped coordinator on staff. Could you stand up, please? And her duties is to evaluate and look at every single plans and to look at all opportunities to ensure that we're providing a facility that's safe for all. And she's very good at it, and she's very passionate, and she's looking at it.
And I know Elizabeth Stacy, in fact, I was on the radio with a Portland, Oregon radio station yesterday, talking about Elizabeth who came from Portland to Miami. And I said, "When I first met Elizabeth when she came here for FDOT, she told me that she was a confident bicyclist coming from Portland, Oregon. A month later, I encountered her, and she said, 'I am scared to death here in Miami-Dade County.'" That in itself says a lot. So I'm counting on Elizabeth and the team here at F.DIST6 to take that in consideration. If you have somebody who's confident in Portland, why can't she be confident in Miami-Dade County? So I ask in all design consideration, and we don't want to wait another five years for another five-year plan and then the implementation of that. You know, lives are at risk right now. We are asking that if you have current design, that they be rejiggered and protected bike lanes being considered. And it doesn't have to be a concrete barrier, it can be steel bollards, for example, it can be concrete planters, but anything that prevents that 4,000-pound car from hitting me, a very vulnerable road user. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments.
So I'll just briefly introduce myself. My name's William Moose. I'm a professional transportation planner. I focus on pedestrian and bicycle planning. I actually had a part in making the FHWA's Separated Bike Way Design Guide a couple years ago. I worked at the Pedestrian Bicycle Information Center and Highway Safety Research Center doing safety research, so anyway, this is what I do. And I can just tell you, since I moved here about a year ago, it's just, I'm continually blown away by how bad the situation in Miami is. I mean, we really are like one of the worst in the country for safety, for all road user types, but especially for vulnerable road users, which we just talked about. So I think, you know, there's a lot of things that I could talk about, but very little that I can get in in two minutes. So I just wanted to focus on the safety issue, because it really seems to me that a lot of the bike infrastructure that I've seen, very recent bike infrastructure, is nowhere near what best practice suggests. Like, it's just very poorly implemented and poorly thought in terms of how it actually connects to a bicycle network. And I don't even know who you're designing this stuff for, because like, a lot of times, for instance, on our way here, we got off and there was a bike lane for one block, like off of, I mean, it was where you get off of the limited access freeway, and then it ends as soon as, it's just underneath the bridge, basically, the limited access freeway, and then it ends. It's like, I don't even understand who you're designing this stuff for. I mean, if you would feel comfortable riding on it, I mean, be my guest, but I'm a very avid cyclist, and I would never get on a lot of the roads that have bike infrastructure. Simply because of the way that they're designed, it doesn't make any sense to have a three-and-a-half, four-foot lane with a little six-inch, or even a buffer that you're talking about, like a wider buffer. When speeds are above 45 miles per hour, the fact is that good studies show that only about 2% of people feel comfortable riding on those facilities. So you're designing, you know, something that maybe only 1% or 2% of the population feels comfortable using in those circumstances. So it's really something that we need to be thinking about, who is the design user? So that was one point. Also, a lot of pedestrian crossings, they're just nonexistent in a lot of places, or they have a crossing on one or two legs of the intersection, but not all four. Just put all four, please. Like, it would be marvelous to see all the intersections with pedestrian crossings on all four legs of the crossings, like you see in many other places. Also, I think we got, a report just came out that showed several of the most dangerous roads in the state are at-grade roads that run through our urban areas, so we're not talking, I mean, I-95 was also on that list. But I think there's a fundamental issue of speed and speed management, and it's not just education and enforcement, it's also the engineering element. You know, how do we actually engineer our streets to be safe? And, you know, a lot of the roads that you go down, some of the ones that, like 79th Street, for instance, was mentioned, and that road, the speed limit is like 35 miles an hour, but when you look at it, the design is telling you, "Use me at 60, 70 miles an hour, easy, if there's space on that road," because of the way that it's designed, right? And so I just think that's something that we really, really need to take very, very seriously, is speed management and how we actually engineer the streets in a way, re-engineer streets, like, has to be done to actually get the, you know, safe speeds in our city. And just, you know, last thing I wanted to say, you know, someone was talking about how Portland, someone feels comfortable riding a bike, and in Miami, they don't. But there's nothing about Portland that's special, right? There's no magic geography that makes Portland a great place to ride a bike and Miami a horrible, dangerous, you know, deadly place to ride a bike. It's simply a matter of priorities, planning, what's been implemented. And, you know, just a few years ago, Portland had only about a 1% bike share, and now it's at about 7% commute share in about a decade, and they invested $64 million over the last decade in bike infrastructure, which, if you look at your budget of $3.988 billion, is really not that much. If you could, you know, even like, taking off that $88 billion on the end, that's like 2% of the, or .2% of the budget, I believe, something like that. So anyway, I just think, also, I was looking at $171 million for transit, that's about 4% of the total budget, and even though most trips are still made by car, more than 4% of trips are made by transit, it's getting less than its proportional share of the budget there. So I really think if you're serious about the complete streets, if you're serious about, you know, a more sustainable future and a safer future, let's proportionally fund, or even, you know, you need to make up for decades of underfunding these modes as well. So anyway, this just needs to be taken seriously, and I don't see it being taken that seriously here, based on what I've seen at, you know, other meetings that I've gone to, the projects that I see all over the county. So, I mean, I say this with a lot of respect, I know what you do isn't easy, and I know that you guys do certain things spectacularly well, but I just think this is an area that there needs to be a lot of improvement. Sorry, I talked for more than two minutes, but...
That's all right. Thank you very much for your feedback. All the people in this room are people who can make effectual change, so, you know, we're taking in your feedback, and that's what we're here for, so thank you.
Hi, Azar Choglay, 245 Northeast 14th Street. I'm one of the directors of Transit Alliance, which William is also a part of. First of all, I'd like to thank Jimbo for his opening statements to acknowledge that roads have many uses, cars is not the only one of them. Jim, I don't know if you recognize us from Copenhagen, Iowa, Miami. You started something beautiful with that, and we're here today mainly because of you, really. I mean, it's a long story, I'll explain it the other way, but that meeting really brought people together, and you said that we should come to F.DOT meetings, so here we are. I think also, just a second, what William said, I think that, we see a lot of projects around the room, yes, they are large infrastructure projects that of course require a lot of attention, a lot of investments, and the things we're talking about are tiny, tiny, tiny things on the spectrum of things, and however, we do applaud the things that we do see that are complete street projects, and we know that it can't be the entire focus of your department, but I think what we are looking for is a shift in how F.DOT sees mobility, and that as important as these projects are to serve the existing needs and the needs that are growing within these modes of transportation, we will never move away from a car-centric society without larger-scale shifts in the priorities of departments like yours. And I think that might be most clearly evident by on the back of your forum, please assist us in prioritizing your future transportation-related concerns, although the third one from the bottom that says "impacts on commuters' asses during and after construction" is important. There's no mention here of bicycle or pedestrian safety, and I'd just like to second that it's important, I mean, just to the fact that crosswalk and a high-emphasis crosswalk, that one out of two times I'm crossing the street in Miami, I'm crossing on a low-emphasis crosswalk, which means there is no crosswalk. I think just basic shifts like that are things that, the small things that we're asking you for, that I think could have a large difference in our lives. So thank you for your time and for everything you put into your five-year work program.
Thank you. Do we have any other questions in the room? I do have one from Facebook Live, but I will hold off until we have cleared the room. Okay, I see one. Nope.
Hi, my name's Marcus, and I'm not an alcoholic. And that's, that's a lie. I probably am. Not a very good elected official, as you can tell. Welcome to the city of Sweetwater. Many of you don't know that you're actually in the city of Sweetwater right now. So raise your hands if you actually knew that, that you're in Sweetwater. So have a... So have the room. Welcome. We're a fast-growing city. Rather than bash FDOT, you guys are one of our neighbors. You guys have helped us out immensely with the 107 Avenue Expansion Project, and you guys are really kicking tail on that. And it looks like you guys will probably be done in April. And phenomenal job, you with your partners, and honestly, the city of Sweetwater has failed, because that should have been done 10 years ago, and I know that's our fault, not yours. So I'm not bashing you, I'm bashing us right now. You guys have helped us out with the Tiger Grant. And for those of you who don't know what the Tiger Grant is, it's the pedestrian bridge that connects FIU into the city of Sweetwater. And that's specifically done for pedestrian and bicyclist. So we've also had loss of life on 109 and 8th Street with FIU students. I'm a retired policeman. I'm a retired police lieutenant, and I can't tell you how many times I've showed up to a tragic scene, so you guys are being very proactive, so thank you for that. But I'm gonna be emailing, you definitely, sir. I like to open up two-year, I like to add to your five-year plan, I'll be doing this next year, and I'll be looking at my budget, but I'd like to open up Southwest 8th Street and 112th Avenue. And the reason for that is obviously the University City District and the city of Sweetwater, and just to let you guys know what is we're doing, Sweetwater's changing and evolving. FIU, come 2020, is the second-largest university in the nation. Round of applause for FIU. And many people don't realize that. Here in the city of Sweetwater, Dolphin Mall is actually the most visited location in the state of Florida with 60,000 patrons a day, and I can guarantee you that nobody in this room actually knew that. Raise your hand if you knew that. No. So you're talking about, who raised their hand? That guy over there. You look like you're a big deal, aren't you? That's a snazzy tie, man. So obviously, we're evolving, and what the University City District is, is basically changing the development to 15-story high mixed-use buildings and allowing for development and dorms in FIU, and we're gonna really change the face. So obviously, we have already had an increase in pedestrian traffic. We've already had an increase in bicyclists in the city of Sweetwater. We actually weren't prepared for that, whereas the President, there you are, Madam President. And that's something that we have tried to evolve with, so maybe you guys can help us out for future meetings. But my question is, after this long, drawn-out speech, and hopefully there's a loud applause after, 8th Street and 112th Avenue entrance into the city of Sweetwater, you guys have plans for that?
Currently, I'm not aware of any specific project, but every project has to start somewhere. I encourage you to continue to have a conversation with the department, but also have a discussion with the transportation planning organization, because as we were showing you in the video, they tend to sort of work with us to prioritize what projects we work on, and they start, they feed the five-year work program. So that would be something we definitely would want to talk to them and talk to the city to see in terms of priority, where does it fit and how do we pay for such a project? All right, thank you. And cue applause.
Thank you, Commissioner. Do we have any other questions in the room? Or comments? Happy to take either. Okay, seeing none. We do have one comment or question from Facebook Live. Okay, so here's the question. What is the status of the Dolphin Station Park and Ride being built along with MDT? No status update or pictures have been posted on the progress. Please advise. Thank you. And I do have MDX in the room with me, so if you'd like to come up, please, to discuss this project, I believe Albert Sosa is here with us. Okay, there you are.
Hi, I'm Albert Sosa with MDX. That project, the Dolphin Park and Ride, is a partnership between FDOT, Miami-Dade County through the Department of Transit and Public Works, and the Miami-Dade Expressway Authority. It's currently under construction, and we expect to finish it in the coming months. It's gonna be in the winter of this year that that construction will be completed.
All right, so hopefully that answered your question to our viewer on Facebook Live, and we have one more. Okay. Okay, so this question is in Monroe County. I'm sorry, what? Okay, got it. Okay. In Monroe County, will US-1 and the Florida Keys Overseas Heritage Trail be restored to its pre-Irma condition? Will landscaping be restored? Litter and debris completely removed? Right-of-way sod replaced? Florida Keys Overseas Heritage Trail repaired? So obviously, we are dealing with Hurricane Irma as a department. We do have a lot of ongoing projects and projects that were completed in the past. We're working with FEMA and with FHWA to get everything back to at least its pre-storm condition. I do have members from my maintenance team here. I believe Renato's in the room. Renato, if you could just add to that, that would be fantastic. Thank you.
Renato Marrero with Maintenance. It's a quick answer. Work program, design, construction, and maintenance, we're gonna have to work together to restore whatever was there before the hurricane. Right now, we're assessing what were the impacts. There's a lot of debris that we need to move out of the way and be able to see what's behind the debris. So it's gonna be a slow process, but we're definitely working on restoring essentially the entire stretch of the Keys to its original conditions.
Thank you, Renato. Do we have any more questions or comments? All right, seeing none. Thank you all very much for attending our public hearing and for providing your feedback. It's extremely important for not only myself, who, you know, hits the keys and puts these projects in there, but for our engineers and for all of our technical advisors and the department to listen to this feedback so that we can actually make changes and adjust to what the needs are. So with that being said, thank you all very much, and I hope you have a great night.
All right, ladies and gentlemen, again, for tuning in. 2017 Workbook Facebook Live Stream with the public hearing. The portion of the presentation and comment has come to a conclusion. Here's a reminder that you can go still and provide your comments right here on Facebook, just write it on the comment box, and you can go ahead and add it right there on our box. You could also mail in your comment to the District 6 Communications Office at 1,000 Northwest 111th Avenue, Room 6134, Miami, Florida 33172, or you can give us a call at 305-470-5349. Send us an email, wpcomments@dotstate dot fl dot us. Also, I'd like to remind you that you can visit our website. You saw some of the presentations, some of the PowerPoints that were presented here tonight. They are available for download. All you have to do is head on over to fdotmiamidade.com/workprogram. That's fdotmiamidade.com/workprogram. There you can find information too, on how to communicate with us, or send us any opinions, ideas, or suggestions that you may have about ongoing or current projects that are taking place right now here in District 6, which covers Miami-Dade and Monroe County. And in just a few minutes, we will speak to a couple of engineers that are here with us today at the District 6 Auditorium. One of them being Mr. Alan Brick Turin. He is the FDOT District 6 Smart Plan Program Manager. Now, what does SMART stand for, right? Well, it stands for Strategic Miami Area Rapid Transit Plan, better known as the SMART Plan Program. And now, again, to speak, he's gonna join us to speak about the program, Mr. Alan Brick Turin. Alan, if you could join me for two seconds. Thank you so very much, Alan, for taking your time. Good evening. Now, can you explain to us what the SMART Plan is? What is it all about?
The SMART Plan is really a transformative program of transportation improvements that will create an entire network of high-quality rapid transit throughout Miami-Dade County. It includes six rapid transit corridors, and it also includes eight Bus Express rapid transit corridors. So we've got a real network that'll be, it'll be within two miles of about 2/3 of the population of Miami-Dade County and 75% of the jobs, so everyone will have access to high-quality transit.
So Alan, which state roads is FDOT currently evaluating to be part of the SMART Plan project?
The FTA is cooperating with Miami-Dade County through the Department of Transportation and Public Works. We're looking at Northwest 27th Avenue from the county line all the way down to State Road 112, Kendall Drive, the full length, from Dade Land all the way to the west, and also, we're looking at Flagler Street from 1st Avenue all the way out west to 107th.
And now, I understand that this is an effort of Miami-Dade County project, actually. So how is FDOT District 6 lending a hand to the project?
Well, FDOT was asked to assist because these are all state roads, so the state has an interest in making sure that everything is done right according to their standards, while also working with the Department of Transportation and Public Works, who ultimately operate transportation on those corridors.
Mr. Alan, I want to thank you so much for your time, and I know you're here asking any questions to our residents about the SMART Plan, so thank you very much for your time and explaining to us. Thank you, Alan. Thank you so much. Just a few seconds, I'm gonna step out of the way real quickly, just to show you a little And right now, we're gonna bring in in just a few seconds, a few seconds, Mr. Pablo Orozco. We spoke earlier today to one of our bridge project engineers who are working in the seven-mile bridge project down in Monroe County. But right now, we're gonna bring in the District 6 Structures Maintenance Engineer, Mr. Pablo Orozco. Pablo, thank you so very much for taking your time here, Pablo, and speaking to us. Now, how does the department maintain our bridges here, Miami-Dade and Monroe County? And of course, we have plenty of bridges down here.
Of course. The way we do the maintenance of our bridges is based on a proactive program that is based on inspection, repairs, proactive maintenance, and rehabilitation projects. Just to provide some details, we do regular inspection of our bridges, and then, based on those inspections, the results of those, we come and we analyze the data, and we come out with repairs within the next year of that inspection. So we try to repair all bridges to keep it, you know, in good shape, and some of the repairs require more than just minor repairs. So when that happens, then we create projects, bigger projects, that we have to do designs, and then you have to go through a construction process, a construction phase. So that's the way that we keep our bridges in good health and safe for the traveling public.
And Pablo, now, when it comes to South Florida, of course, we have, we're surrounded by water, right, the ocean, so seawater, saltwater is a holistic environment for our bridges. So how does the department prepare for such situations and issues like saltwater, sun, and so forth?
Well, as I said, you know, and as I was explaining, we have a really proactive maintenance program, and in general, DOT and the industry, we keep and we try to design better bridges, we try to improve materials, and as we go and as we're repairing bridges as well, we're always trying new products, new technology in order to extend the life of our bridges and keeping them in good health, protecting our investment on our infrastructure. So we have different systems that protects, once the bridge gets damaged and the steel that is in it gets corroded, then we go and we repair it and we add technology like cathode protection, which is protecting whatever we repair, so it lasts longer and the water doesn't go there as fast as, you know, it goes. However, you know, as you mentioned, the environment is really, you know, aggressive, and so we have to keep that proactive maintenance, you know, and keep investing in our bridges so they're safe, and whenever we have a hurricane, like Hurricane Irma now, you know, that after the hurricane, that we go and inspect the bridges, we find out that they're in, you know, they perform well and they're safe, you know, for the traveling public. And basically, that's what we do, proactive maintenance, doing repairs when they're needed, and proving or including new technology that will help us preserve the bridges.
Pablo, I want to thank you so much for your time and explain to us about what goes, what happens, right, when maintaining the bridges here in Miami-Dade and Monroe. Thank you so very much for your time. Thank you, Pablo. And right now, we're gonna take a quick look here, just to show you about the auditorium, what we have. Take a brief look at the auditorium. Okay, and now, ladies and gentlemen, I'd like to welcome Sweetwater Commissioner Marcos Villanueva. Thank you very much, Commissioner, for joining us to here. It's a pleasure to have you here at the District Auditorium, and of course, this is a great opportunity, the work program, public hearing, not only to hear from Commissioner, elected officials like yourself, but the public. But what are your thoughts about today's event?
Today's event was great. This event's being held, obviously, in the city of Sweetwater. Most people don't know that. Here in the city of Sweetwater, we're constantly growing, and we're working with our public partners here with FDOT Miami-Dade Transit, FIU specifically, our residents, and we're developing immensely in the city of Sweetwater. And the issue that we're having is our development is happening faster than our capital improvements in our roadways because of lack of funding. Currently, we have the 107 Avenue Expansion Project, which has been a huge success, and that should be done in April. And that is from Southwest 8th Street to West Flagler on 107 Avenue. We just began last year the pedestrian bridge that goes, travels over Southwest 8th Street on 109 Avenue, and that's from a Tiger Grant. It's an $11 million Tiger Grant that our employees in the city of Sweetwater applied for. They worked really hard in acquiring that grant, and it's now a success. That project should be done and complete, potentially, the beginning of next year. It's gonna save lives. And what we need to do in a city is really come up with a strategic plan, and that's what I'm doing, trying to come up with a strategic plan in the city of Sweetwater, not only with roadways, sidewalks, streets, improvements, capital improvements, and obviously finding the funding sources and working with our partners like FDOT.
How important is it to work with, like, FDOT District 6 to make your city street, to make your streets, your roadways very safe and protective for your citizens and anyone who visits us?
Well, any administrator or elected official that doesn't work with your public partners is an idiot, is an imbecile. You have to work with FDOT, with the state. These are the professionals. You have to work with Miami-Dade County. We're a municipality. We're one of, I believe, 35 municipalities in Miami-Dade County. Obviously, the county and FDOT are the professionals. All I am is an elected official, I'm a retired policeman, so I have to literally go to the experts and figure out what the best course of action is, what the solution is. In the city of Sweetwater, we want to open up Southwest 8th Street and 112th Avenue, really to alleviate traffic congestion and give our residents more access point and egress, an ingress into our city, and help our city grow. And our city's gonna continue to grow. Like I mentioned earlier, FIU across the street is, come 2020, the second-largest university in the nation, which is a huge success. We have Dolphin Mall, which is 60,000 patrons a day, the most visited location in the state of Florida. We have seven federal agencies in the city of Sweetwater. We have the largest IKEA in the southeastern United States. So we're constantly growing as a city, and we're trying to be par, at par with other municipalities.
Commissioner, I want to thank you for coming out here tonight and joining us. Thank you so much, Commissioner. Thank you, thank you so much. Thank you. Okay, and now, we're gonna show you just a quick shot here at our auditorium, District 6, as we move forward with more information going on here at a public hearing. Again, you can go ahead and add your comments right there on our Facebook page, just write it right below. You can go ahead and write it there, or send us a mail by mail at 1,000 Northwest 111th Avenue, Room 6134, Miami, Florida 33172, and that is to the District 6 Communications Office. And now, ladies and gentlemen, we've been speaking along to many several project engineers, but now, we're gonna move forward and speak a little bit about how important safety is. Right now, Mr. Carlos Armento, the District-